We'll move on to Conduct of Business, please.
Item 6A, Receive Investment Report and Adopt Resolution Approving the Amended City Investment Policy.
Finance Director, oh Minister, too. I know you've been looking forward to this, Finance Director, so please.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, and I am the city's Finance Director. I'm here with Esther Garibay-Fernandez, our Financial Services Manager. And tonight, we'll be providing an overview of the city's investment portfolio and request to make minor changes to the city's investment policy. So the objective of this evening's presentation is twofold. One, to receive the annual investment report, and then, two, adopt a resolution approving the amended city's investment policy. So the agenda for this evening's presentation is to provide a background, legal authority, and goals of the city's investments, review some key economic indicators that impacts the markets and the city's investment strategies, provide an overview of the portfolio, investment earnings, describe recommendations to changes to the existing policy, and request the council to adopt those changes. In prior years, the city's treasurer would provide a verbal update to council regarding the city's investments. In December of 2017, the duties of the city treasurer were transferred to the Finance Director. So this year, finance staff have developed a robust annual report and presentation to provide additional perspective on economic indicators impacting our portfolio, strategies for cash management and monitoring, challenges that staff do have in abiding by the currently restrictive policy in place, and how important the management of the portfolio is at earning interest that could fund important city priorities over time. Just a reminder that the City Council does receive a monthly investment portfolio summary on the consent calendar, which is this report in your packet every month. And then also, every month, you do receive a report on the cash balances by funds. So council does receive this on a monthly basis, and this is just a more comprehensive annual report out. So moving on to the next page. So first, just a background of the legal authority of the investment policy and activities. All investment activities are governed by the California law and the government code and the city's investment policy. For public agency funds, the primary objective as required by the code is always the safety of principal, always. The investment policy authorizes fairly conservative investments, requires monthly investment reports, city council, and it requires investment decisions to be consistent with the prudent investor standard guideline, which states that "an investment manager shall act with care, skill, prudence, and diligence of a prudent person safeguarding principle while maintaining liquidity needs." Staff strives to generate the maximum amount of investment income and, at the same time, retain enough available funds on hand to cover the city's daily cash flow demands, such as paying our vendors and processing payroll. Many municipalities do contract with an independent investment advisor or investment brokerage firms to buy and sell investments. When an investment matures, staff will look to the market to determine whether or not an investment fits with the overall strategy of the portfolio with the highest rate of return. It is in the city's best interest to obtain quotes from multiple brokers to identify optimal investment opportunities for the city. On a day-to-day basis, staff works with multiple brokers, one of whom is a dedicated public agency investing specialist from Piper Jaffray Companies, who provides the city with investment banking, cash flow, and asset management services. The city has contracted with Piper Jaffray for over eight years, and they perform these investment services for many other cities in San Mateo County as well. Tonight, we have Victor Umehukeje. He's here with us this evening, and he's our public agency investing specialist, who has over 25 years of experience in this industry. He works very closely with myself and Esther on a daily basis on helping us manage our investments and providing an overview tonight, and he will be here to provide an overview tonight on some key economic indicators that impacts our investments. So Victor, if I can ask you to come up, please, to the podium.
My name is Victor Umehukeje with Piper Jaffray, San Francisco. Your Honor, Mayor, Medina, and council members, thank you for inviting me. I have worked with the city for over eight years, and I have been managing investment for cities and counties over 25, 27 years here in the state of California, working with state governments, cities, counties, different districts. Our job is to make sure that your money is safe, and in doing so, work with the Treasury and Finance Director to make sure we provide the very important economic and investment guidelines that make that possible, because you cannot invest in a vacuum. Just a few slides I brought in today, just to show you where we are in the economy. Household income and net worth have been growing, but of course, every time we have seen growth during the internet bubble or the housing bubble, and now we have a different kind of bubble coming up, we are afraid that eventually we might have an economic slowdown that comes after that. Next slide. Consumer debt have been increasing. One of the problems we've had in this economy is despite the fact that everybody has jobs, wages haven't been increasing, but people are living like they have a lot more money than they were used to in the past. The difference between what they are earning and what they're spending is consumer spending, and we now have over $13.86 trillion of consumer debt in the economy. Credit card interest payments are skyrocketing across the board. If you look at where we were in March of '03 to where we are now, you can see that we've gone from almost $80 billion to $900 billion in payments on credit card interest payments. We're looking at construction spending, and this is all to get, I will bring it all together to get a handle on where we are in the economy. Construction spending and recessions go hand in hand. Whenever we see construction spending fluctuate the way it has been doing with private construction spending, because they are the forerunner of where the expenditure is going, and we're now beginning to see that construction spending is declining substantially across the board. If you look at where we were in 1997 on December '07, and now December of last year, look at how much we're declining. Recession and low unemployment can coexist. We have seen that before. You know, now everybody, we are like less than 2% unemployment rate, and everybody goes, everything is hunky-dory, but it's not true. We have in the past have recessions and unemployment exist at the same time. And if you look at August '86, August '96, August '06, August '16, you can see the substantial number of times where we have had a recession at the same time we've had full employment. And the bottom line is, interest rates, because of all these forces, will continue to go lower. Right now, the rate you get in one year and the rate you get in five years is almost the same, and in some countries around the world, it's negative. You basically pay money for them to hold your money. So based on that, our portfolio is doing exceptionally well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Victor. And so Victor, just working with Victor, we wanted to provide just a number of slides that sort of talk about what some of the trends are happening in the economy, so that we can understand that information and use it to better manage the city's investment portfolio. So with this context in mind and some of those considerations, municipalities across the state have had to change their investment portfolio strategies. And staff are focused on these strategies listed here to help us reduce risk from the interest rate fluctuations that could occur and retain the lowest risk possible for our investments to maximize the interest earnings. Staff are focused on diversifying the city's investment portfolio to include some additional investment options and maximize those earnings. Staff have also contracted with two additional brokerage firms recently, so that we can obtain additional quotes to ensure competitive pricing. And given the uncertainty in the economy, staff are evaluating longer-term investments in order to lock in higher yield rates of return over a longer period of time. And in the coming slides, where proposed changes to the investment policy are being made, staff would like to increase the maximum investment targets by type to more effectively manage the portfolio, and I'll get to that in just a few moments. But first, I want to provide just a brief overview of the city's reserve policy as a reminder for what is the majority of the city's investment portfolio comes from the city's reserves. These are reserves that are required in the city's reserve policy. It includes reserves in the general fund, the general fund reserve fund, the general fund capital reserve fund, the emergency disaster reserve fund, and a few others. We discussed this during the budget process a few months ago. This slide here is a summary from that budget process, where it does talk about the minimum reserve requirements in each of those funds. Again, this is a majority of what the city's investment portfolio contains. This slide here shows a summary of what makes up the current $87.9 million investment portfolio by investment sector. So the United States in investment and agency investments include obligations issued by various federal agencies. The local agency investment fund, it's more commonly referred to as LAIF, is a voluntary pooled money investment account program that began first in 1977, and it's an investment alternative for local governments, and it's administered by the California State Treasurer. The San Mateo County pool includes funds from a portfolio of credit instruments, and it's administered by the county. Let's see. And the city has also purchased United States Treasury bills, and those are instruments that are backed by the full faith and credit of the United States federal government and their pledge for payment of principal and interest. It's important to note here that all of the investment sectors have very, very favorable ratings, very favorable credit ratings, so they're very, very low risk. Staff does monitor cash balances each week to confirm that we have adequate available cash on hand in order to pay payroll and to pay our vendors for all of the priority capital and operating projects that the city has. Staff retains a minimum amount of available funds on hand of no more than about $4 million at any one point in time to cover those day-to-day costs. A simple analogy, to sort of explain this better, is that the $4 million that staff has on hand, think of that as your personal checking account, where you pay sort of your daily or weekly or monthly types of recurring transactions. And the money that the city has in its investment portfolio, think of that more as like your savings account or a CD or certificate of deposit that you might have as well, where it's more for a little bit more longer-term purposes. This slide here shows a summary of the investment earnings that are expected in the fiscal year just ended, fiscal year 1819. The city of San Bruno has been able to mitigate investment earning fluctuations and other risks by diversifying our investment portfolio into these categories listed here. The average yield or rate of return on the investment portfolio as of last month was 2.11%. Interest rates have been more favorable over the past six months, but as Victor alluded to earlier, they're starting to decline and fluctuate more greatly. As investments that we have mature, staff will ensure that we purchase investments at the highest interest rate possible. I also want to talk about our maturity for some of our investments as well. More than three-quarters of our investments mature within three months, which is a very, very near-term view, and then the rest mature anywhere between 12 months to three years out. Staff will be reviewing our investment options to ensure that we are maximizing the rate of return over investment vehicles that mature over a longer period of time to sort of control and mitigate that investment rate of return fluctuation that might occur. So so far, we've only been talking about our balances and our rates of return on the different types of investments, but I do want to make sure that folks understand where we actually record the interest earnings in each of the city's funds that earn that interest. And so staff, interest earnings are allocated to these funds based on the cash and the fund balances that are in those funds. This slide here shows the general fund, water, wastewater, stormwater, and a few others, where we show what the projected interest earnings are in those funds in fiscal year 1819 and what was budgeted as interest earnings in fiscal year 1920. Investment earnings are an important revenue source for operational and capital projects. An example of this is the action that council took just two weeks ago, where you appropriated $125,000 into the Crestmore Canyon wildfire mitigation project, using only the interest earnings that were accumulated from the city's investment portfolio to fund that project. The water and the wastewater enterprise funds have higher interest earnings compared to some of the other funds, and as discussed in the city's adopted budget process, both enterprises have many identified significant operational and capital improvement projects that span multiple years. And so those funds will be used to pay for those very critical capital infrastructure projects over time. So with that, this slide shows a summary of the current challenges that exist by staff trying to administer the existing investment policy and proposed changes that staff are requesting this evening. The policy currently states that a maximum amount be invested in specific investments, and it does not allow for flexibility in deviating from those maximum percentages. During the year, just to give an example of how this is difficult to adhere to, large property tax payments come in on two installments a year. And when those cash deposits are made into the city's bank account, it throws off the percentage in these categories. And so, just to reiterate the point, it's a financial disadvantage for staff to have to sell an investment early, potentially incurring penalties, simply to meet a maximum amount required in the policy. Staff is also proposing to adjust the maximum investment targets for the United States government agency obligations from 38% to 75%, LAIF from 24% to 30%, the county pool from 38% to 50%, and to provide staff an acceptable level of flexibility not to exceed a target when evaluating the city's overall cash position.
Excuse me. I was going to say through the chair. Just because I think some people might see the increase of San Mateo County pool, that may be of a concern, just because of what has happened in the past? When all of a sudden, it took a hit?
Yes, I'm aware of that, yes. And the county pool has been performing rather well over the past number of years since that happened. And because just simply increasing the percent, the maximum percent allowable in each of these instruments does not mean that we have to meet that percentage. It can be much lower, and it'll be, staff will continually monitor how that pool is performing compared to the other options that are before us to invest in, and we will weigh the risk with all of the options accordingly.
Thank you.
The current policy does allow for the purchase of certificates of deposits, or CDs. Staff is proposing to increase the one-year limit to five years to broaden the list of CDs that we may be able to leverage. And then, in working with our investment brokers, discussing potential investment policy changes with investment advisors, and reviewing the investment policies of other cities in San Mateo County, staff would also like to add additional investment options that are being used by many other cities in the county currently, that still retain a very low-risk investment options. We're proposing to add eligible commercial paper options to the investment policy. Commercial paper is a money market security issued by large corporations to obtain funds to meet short-term debt obligations and are backed by issuing banks, and the companies promise to pay over the maturity period. Staff is also proposing to add California municipal obligations as well, which will allow for registered municipal notes or bonds of the state or local municipalities to be purchased. Again, those are two options that many cities across the county and the state have in their investment portfolio as well. In summary, these changes provide staff with some needed flexibility to be able to respond to changes in the economy, consider additional low, very low-risk investment options in order to maintain adequate cash flow and maximize investment earnings. All the proposed changes to the city's investment policy are highlighted in Attachment 3 in your packet this evening in the Track Changes text format. If the modifications, if council approves the modifications to the policy, the city's holdings will be adjusted over time, bringing the portfolio into full compliance with the new policy. So next steps is to receive the investment report and to adopt a resolution approving the amended city's investment policy. And that concludes my presentation this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Before we come to council, City Manager.
Sure. Through the chair, two really brief remarks. One, I just want to make sure that the council and the public really understand that our current investment policies are really based on the model of protect the principal, and that is true with the recommendations that we're making. The other point connected to that is, when you hear that our average rate of return is just over 2%, many people will say, "Well, I earned 7%," or "My portfolio did X, Y, and Z. You need to find some better investments." That's actually not true. We, our policies are protection of principle. Our money has to be conservatively invested and made as much available as possible. Hence, Keith said, the vast majority of our portfolio has three- to four-month horizons, because we need that money available. A lot of the money is money that we pay out during the year on various capital improvement projects or various approved expenditures, because, as Keith mentioned, a lot of our major revenue sources come in in buckets throughout the year, and we need to hold that money, but then have that money available maybe for payroll in six months. And so having a flexible but conservatively-based policy is critical for San Bruno, as is other municipalities, and I just want to thank Keith and Piper Jaffray for their work on looking at our investment policy and coming together with the recommendations that are before you.
Thank you. Was anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this topic? Why don't we bring it to council? Any questions or comments from council? Michael?
Through the chair, thank you. So Keith, is there a way for us to measure the relative risk of each of the investment options and to come up with some index of portfolio risk that we could compare as we move these things around? In general, I agree, giving you the flexibility to move the money and let it grow where it's growing best is definitely a step in the right direction, but it would also be good to understand how the risk profile also changes as we do that.
I appreciate that question, and there is a way to do that. And the policy, the existing policy and the proposed policy currently do outline minimum risk targets that are allowable for each purchase that the city could actually make. And more often than not, the city chooses to purchase investment options that are well above the minimum risk requirement for each of them. And so what we can do over time is measure the risk of each individual purchase that are made to see, basically to ensure that we're purchasing the lowest risk possible investments over time, sort of balancing that with the rate of return that the city would like to expect from that, and managing our cash flow needs. So we would be able to do that over time.
Okay. Yeah, I can see some situations where our appetite for risk might be a little bigger if we, I mean, if we have a fairly good understanding of where markets are going and things. Another thought I had, and I've always been a big advocate for us building our reserves, and I'm wondering, do we ever evaluate if perhaps our reserves are growing to the point where the amount that we're making on those investments puts us at a disadvantage where we're paying for capital that we've borrowed at a much higher rate than what we're earning on what we're holding for emergencies and ever consider rebalancing those things? So I know we have a policy that says we must hold this much money. We have another policy that says we can only incur this much risk, and at the same time, we may be paying more for our other, for money that we've borrowed. So is there an opportunity ever to sort of reevaluate how we're doing that? And, you know, I was thinking, you know, in like my own personal finances, I may have money in the bank, I'm earning half a percent in a savings account, but I could go out and buy a car and pay 10% on that money. So in that case, it would definitely make more sense for me to loan myself the money and then pay myself back over time rather than give it to somebody else. But is that something that we should be thinking about in terms of how we structure our policies?
Yeah. You bring up a number of good points. That's where our salaries are. And so a couple of thoughts on that would be, first and foremost, as the City Manager, and I have presented over the past year or so, we are embarking on a fiscal sustainability project, and so that, there's multiple components to that project. One component really needs to be reviewing and assessing various financial-related policies, such as the reserve policy, thinking about the city's debt portfolio, and sort of looking at the totality of the city's financial picture to see if we need to make some potential changes or adjustments to any of those policies. So and so I think under the umbrella of that project, we can revisit some of the components of each of those policies. But to follow on that a little bit further, just to sort of hone in on a point, the city's investment portfolio, a majority of those funds do come from the city's reserves. And so the city is making money on its investments because of the substantial amount of capital we have in the reserves. Some of the city's reserves are a set dollar amount minimum threshold, like the emergency disaster fund, for example. Another reserve, the most substantial, is the general fund reserve. It's a 25% target of total annual general fund expenditures. So as the city's general fund fluctuates, goes up, the reserve requirement also goes up, giving us again, more capital, more capital to invest. And so the policies are interrelated, so we need to be able to look at them more holistically over time.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Council? Marty?
Yes. Can we go back just one slide? I'm sorry, a couple more, right there. Can you provide a scenario when you would have to get up to 75% there? Because the other ones seem reasonable, from 24 to 30, 38 to 50, but the jump from 38 to 75, like, can you help me understand when or why that would be necessary to go that much bigger, being that that would be the majority where the funds are already allocated?
I would say, over the past year, most of the purchases that the city has made have been in the federal agency investments, though we have seen the most favorable rate of returns in the portfolio in those types of investment instruments. And so if that continues, staff would like to have the flexibility to go up to 75, not saying that staff would necessarily have to, it would just give us the opportunity to do so. And again, evaluating those rates of return compared to the other options available, we would make those decisions.
And so you'd be taking the funds out of the county pool and the agency investment fund and just parking them over there?
That would be an option, or as other, if we have funds that are invested in a certificate of deposit, for example, once that matures, we would look at the market, we'd go to the market, talk to our brokers, and if one of the most favorable, one of the most favorable investment options at that time is a US federal agency, we would likely make that decision to then transfer the balance into that account.
And choosing that 75% is basically looking at our past history of the opportunities that we possibly missed by not having that flexibility?
There's a couple of reasons why we landed on 75%. One is that I think 38% is rather low, especially compared to what that threshold is in many other cities in the county. Talking with Victor and a few of our other investment brokerage firms about what sort of that optimal percent maximum should be, and then also looking at the performance in our current portfolio of those investments, sort of weighing all of those factors led us to propose a 75% threshold.
And the important thing for everyone to understand is, these still are very secure investments.
All of them are the most secure, highly rated.
Double A and higher.
Low risk, double A or triple A or higher. Yeah, they're all very low-risk investment options for the city.
City Manager.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off what Keith mentioned, and on the screen there, if you do the math, our current policy has hard thresholds for each of those three categories. So US Agency, LAIF, and the county pool, currently, that are, each of those three add up to 100%. And so they're hard percentages, and so we're constantly balancing money, selling investments early just to meet a policy threshold. The recommendation, both the 70- up to 100%, and so they're hard percentages, and so we're constantly balancing money, selling investments early just to meet a policy threshold. The recommendation, both the 75% in US Agency, the 30% in LAIF, and then the 50% in the county pool adds up to a total of 155%. And so that gives us the ability to have some float in between those where we're not actually incurring penalties and selling investments early just to meet a policy threshold that's very precise.
Through the chair, I was gonna say that's probably the most important comment you can make tonight, was just what you said, and I think that, I appreciate staff bringing this forward to us because we don't want to restrict and hinder, you know, the best decisions we can make and the direction we can go, and I think you've done, I mean, I kind of look at here like, God, I haven't done this before. So thank you for bringing it up forward, and I think that this is exactly what we need to be doing, so.
Irene?
I concur, and I also appreciate the glossary at the end. Thank you very much.
And then just within your report, Keith, just so it's known to for the public, in 2017, there was an, it went to the voter of the people as far as not having a city treasurer, and therefore that was adopted and passed by the voters, and so therefore, as in other practices, the city finance director now assume those responsibilities.
Okay, there's no other questions? This is an action item. There's the resolution.
Through the chair. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the amended investment policy.
Second.
City clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.